Good evening. Today is Tuesday, May 12th, and a meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board is called to order. This meeting is entirely online with public access through a link provided on the agenda and is also being broadcast on CCTV Channel 21. Both our previous budget meeting and this board meeting will be translated into Spanish and a recording will be available on the district's website tomorrow afternoon.
Ambas reuniones anteriores sobre el presupuesto y esta reunión de la mesa directiva será traducida al español. La grabación estará disponible en el sitio web del distrito mañana por la tarde. Gracias.
Thank you for that. Okay, so before we begin, this is a reminder to keep your microphones on mute except when called on to speak to get my attention because the raise your hand option, I can't see everybody. You know, you can do like a physical one, but I will go through the virtual boardroom. So you will always get a chance to ask your questions. Okay, so we're going to start with board attendance via roll call. Satya?
Yes, sure.
Ron?
Present.
Kathy? Kathy? I'll come back to you because I see you're logged in. Jesse?
Present.
I'm here. Danielle?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Kathy? Okay, well, I see her on, but I don't see your face right now because all I see is the flag.
I, yes.
There, okay, good, you're there. Okay, great. Thank you. Everybody's here. We'll now do the pledge of allegiance and there is a flag on your screen. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Continue to have a common sense. One nation under God. Invisible, visible, with liberty and justice.
We were really in sync on that.
Yeah, we were really badly out of sync there. I'm hearing all the echoes. There are no agenda modifications tonight. First off, I want to say welcome to our new Assistant Superintendent and I'm going to, who officially begins July 1, and I'm going to try to get this right. Ethan Udos Inata. Udos Inata, I believe is the correct way to say his last name. So welcome aboard. And Linda, we're going to miss you. It's been special to have you around and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Next, moving on to spotlights, spotlight for success or unsuccessful, Superintendent Perry?
Right, so we're doing these just a bit different tonight and we'll be putting up a visual of the company's logo and then Lillian will read each of our spotlights for us. So I'm going to turn it over to Ollie.
Great. Tonight, we want to spotlight Marion Polk Food Share, the Boys and Girls Club of Salem and our very own Career Technical Education Center for stepping up to help students and their families experiencing food insecurity. Our first community partner of the month is Marion Polk Food Share. Since the closure of schools due to the coronavirus in mid-March, Marion Polk Food Share has been providing food boxes to our families on Wednesdays at Four Corners Elementary. The boxes are packed full of canned goods, cereal, rice or pasta, and applesauce. There is also usually a bag of produce like potatoes, apples, onions, pears, or oranges. Last Friday, Salem Kaiser and the Marion Polk Food Share added Washington Elementary as a second food box distribution location. In just 90 minutes, all 500 boxes were handed out on a first come, first served basis. This is evidence of the great need we are working together to try and alleviate. Marion Polk Food Share is a pillar of our community and we're darn proud to partner with them. And I just want to make sure we mention that the staff that you see here are some of our our own Salem Kaiser staff manning those food distribution sites, boxing those boxing those food items and also our transportation department, our bus drivers are picking up those items from the warehouse and delivering them to the schools. So kudos to them. Our next community partner of the month is the Boys and Girls Club of Salem. We also wish to thank the Boys and Girls Club of Salem for a generous donation of 750 food boxes distributed at McKay High and Washington Elementary. These boxes of food came from Pacific Coast Fruit Company and as you see there had apples, grapes, oranges, fresh snap peas, and even cheese. And the Boys and Girls Club provides crucial support to our families year-round with after-school programs and much more. Its mission is to inspire and enable all youth grades 1 through 12 to realize their full potential, especially those in the most need. Boys and Girls Club of Salem, you inspire us. And I want to add on here, I got a call this morning that the Boys and Girls Club is going to be adding on a weekly dinner offering and so they're going to be following up with more details to us so that we can help get the word out about that when that gets added on. And finally, our third volunteer of the month is C-Tech. We also want to recognize our Career and Technical Education Center for lending its meals in commons as a space for Marion Polk Food Share to prepare food boxes. Located close to the Marion Polk Food Share, C-Tech has the space school district volunteers and Marion Polk Food Share volunteers need to box up food while maintaining social distancing and meeting the increased demand of the Marion Polk Food Share. After the volunteers pack up the boxes, Salem Kaiser staff transports and distributes them at Four Corners and Washington Elementary. Thank you, C-Tech and Salem Kaiser volunteers. We're also excited because the cooler space at C-Tech will be used to help bolster the supply of foods for the Meals on Wheels program.
Awesome. Thank you, Lillian. Next, we're moving on to public comment. This section of public comment is for agenda items only. We provided a link on the agenda, which is also on our website, for people to submit public comment. The link provides details about three options for submitting comments. Written comment, pre-recorded video comment, or call-in during the meeting. Our communications team will facilitate public comment, so I'm going to turn this over to them. Those needing translation of their public comment, it will be provided and you'll get a few extra minutes for that. Lillian, is there any public comment today?
We do not have any public comment on agenda items. We have one public comment on a non-agenda item.
Okay. So our next item then is the 2019, or 20, yeah, 2019, 2020 supplemental budget hearing. This hearing is a reference to this year's budget, not the proposed budget discussed in the meeting that was earlier tonight. Public comment for the 2021 proposed budget will be received at the May 19th and May 26th budget meetings that are coming up. So I'm now going to open the hearing of the 2019-2020 supplemental budget. It's now open. Superintendent Perry, Perry, I'm having a real problem tonight. It's all you, super.
You've been great. As I talked about earlier in the budget committee process, the adoption of the budget comes with the appropriations for how we can spend dollars. Because of COVID-19 and a number of grant funds, there is, it's required to have a supplemental budget process. So that's what you're in right now is a supplemental budget process for 1920. The executive order required us to provide childcare for essential workers and increase food service for meals. This is not a typical gen fund expense for the district, so an appropriation in enterprise and community services will align the services with the appropriation. So we're putting it in the right categories. And the grants fund the school board accepts throughout the year exceeded the adopted budget for grants fund. So a supplemental budget process is necessary to allow flexibility to spend those, expend those additional grant funds. As they come in into that consent agenda, you accept them, but this aligns the budget process to them. So that's the reason for a supplemental budget and it can be a common thing this time of year.
Okay. We'll now take public testimony on the supplemental budget. Lillian, do we have anybody?
We do not have any public comment.
All right. My next thing on here says, close the hearing, but I'm wondering if we have any questions from any directors. I'll just go around real quick and see if we have any questions. I'm going to go around the virtual boardroom. Satya, do you have any questions on this?
No questions.
Sean?
No, thank you.
Kathy? Kathy, do you have any questions on this?
No questions.
Thank you. Jesse?
Yeah, so the purpose of this is simply because we received $5 million additional dollars from the state and the feds. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense.
Danielle?
Well, I'm not going to lie, I don't really understand this at all because I feel like we haven't really had much information on it. I mean, I can read the piece of paper, but can you elaborate a little on where the, I mean, I understand it came from the state and the feds, but why and what are we doing with it?
So I'm going to see if Mike or Sarah can jump in on this because it might be a little more technical answer than I can answer. Depends on which fund.
Before you go, isn't it possible to put it up on the screen so the community can see what we're looking at besides the proclamation? Is that those attachments in the web?
Are the web, are the supplemental budget in the?
It was in the email.
But it wasn't in the, it's not in the slides that I, we just got a little bit ago. I don't see it.
No, I got it on Friday. Sorry, I just want to make sure people, there you go, Jesse.
I can project it. I can project it. I'll wait a minute to change between the screens.
Lillian to project it for us.
If you look at my screen, you can see.
Oh, he looks like ants.
I have ants all over my screen.
Okay, so Mike was going to answer the question. Is that correct?
Looks like maybe Sarah is going to.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to have Sarah give you the detail.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, so we have two issues this year. One of them is the governor's executive order said that we would provide daycare, right? And that is not something we normally do with gen fund resources. So we're creating the appropriation for that. So that's what's going on in the gen fund. And to be honest, I just chose $1 million. That's probably very high, but I don't know what other executive orders might come out and we certainly won't spend any more than we need to. And then in the grants fund, we allow the schools to redo some of their grants plans through title grants during the year and so that shifts between appropriations. And we also were lucky enough to have some carryover and other things that we didn't plan on. So we have additional resources and then also shuffling.
Could I answer your question, Danielle?
It did.
Great.
Thank you.
And Paul, do you have any questions on this?
Hmm, not for this.
Not for this. Okay, we're going to move on then and close this hearing. So now our action items. My dog's trying to break in the room here. First, we have our Asian Pacific American Heritage Month proclamation. And the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month proclamation for 2020 recognizes and celebrates the numerous contributions Asian Pacific American people have made and continue to make in the United States of America. Salem Kaiser Public Schools celebrates and appreciates the hundreds of Asian Pacific American students we serve. Asian Pacific American Heritage Month is recognized nationally in the month of May. And normally, as long as I've been chair, I have somebody else read the proclamation, but because my son's Asian, I always like to do this particular one. So the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month proclamation, whereas Salem Kaiser Public Schools is committed to reflecting the concerns and needs of the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities and whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have played a significant role in Americans' America's history with their enormous contributions to science, arts, industry, government, and commerce. And whereas the term Asian slash Pacific encompasses all of the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands of, and forgive me when I get some of these wrong, Melanesia, which includes New Guinea, New Hellenia, Manutu, Fiji, and the Solomon Islands. In addition to Micronesia, which includes Mariana, Guam, Wake Island, Palau, Marshall Islands, Kurabidi, Nauru, and the Federated States of Micronesia. And finally, Polynesia, which includes New Zealand, Hawaiian Islands, Rotuma, Midway Islands, Samoa, American Samoa Tonga, Tuvalu, Cook Islands, French Polynesia, and Easter Island. And whereas traders from the Asia-Pacific region reached North America as early as the 16th century, but the first significant wave of immigration began during the late 1800s. And whereas citizens of the Marshall Islands, the Federated States of Micronesia, and the Palau can live and work in the US without visas and work permits because of a 1986 law called the Compact of Free Association or COPA. And whereas a third of the Marshall Islands population has moved to the US with a population growing exponentially in the Salem Kaiser area. And whereas 5% of Salem Kaiser students identify as Asian or Pacific Islander. And whereas 314 Salem Kaiser students identify as Marshallese and 340 students identify as Chukeneese. And whereas the achievement of Asian and Pacific Islander students is growing at high rates. And whereas the graduation rate for Native American Pacific Islander students grew by nearly nine percentage points from 2018. And whereas the Salem Kaiser Public Schools is dedicated to providing resources to directly support continued achievement growth for Asian and Pacific American students. And whereas only 2% of Salem Kaiser employees identify as Asian and Pacific American. 39 identify as Hawaiian and Pacific Islander and 124 identify as Asian. And whereas Salem Kaiser is committed to expanding employment opportunities for the advancement of historically underserved populations. Now therefore, the Salem Kaiser School District Board of Directors proclaims May 2020 to be Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and urges our community to join together in celebrating our students and staff of Asian and Pacific Island heritage and making this period of rededication to the principles of justice and equity or equality for all people. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Salem Kaiser School Board accepts the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month proclamation.
A second. Thank you, Danielle. So is there any discussion? Because I can't see your faces, I'm seeing the proclamation. I'm going to go through the rooms. You gotta wait, Jesse. We're starting with Satya. Do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Sean?
No, thank you.
Kathy?
No question.
Jesse?
Hi. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I've had the honor to be invited to a lot of the Pacific Islander Club events at McKay High School. And so just over the past year or two, you know, I've built a strong relationship with a lot of our Pacific Islander kids over there, great kids. And so I'm so excited to see our school district as, you know, Pacific Islanders, we're raising the graduation rates for them. A lot of these kids and a lot of these families are coming together and I just think it's such a cool thing that this is happening. So shout out to those two Islander Club at McKay because they're awesome.
Danielle?
No questions.
Paul?
Nope.
All those in favors, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it's unanimous. Okay. We are going to move on to Resolution Number 201920-7, supplemental budget and making appropriations for the fiscal year 2019-20. Superintendent Perry, would you please review the item?
There we go. This is the board plate that matches the conversation we just had in around the budget hearing. So this will be a great chance for the community to see what we are talking about. This is related to the childcare expenses and the grant funds and that we just had the budget hearing on. Also, were the questions that Director Bethel answered or asked and was answered during that time. So this is the document for that.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Was that you, Paul?
Yes.
Any discussion? I'll go around the room. Satya, do you have any questions?
I have a question. The CARES Act, any federal funds will reimburse us for any extra added expenses that we incurred due to COVID? Or where this revenue will come from?
Yeah, the revenue through the CARES Act will come in as revenue that comes into the gen fund or to a special revenue fund and we are tracking the expenses in order to be reimbursed. But at this time, we don't have those care funds, so this does not take care of that. And our expectation is those will happen in the, the, will come to us in the 1920 budget, not the 1920 budget.
Can I ask, just didn't quite understand, like we also spent money on the that Wi-Fi and internet infrastructure and spending we spent from that. Is that included in this supplemental budget?
No, we had the appropriate allocations or appropriations in the budget. So it was within our budget limitations that we spent dollars on that. Most of those came out of the technology budget and he was within his budget authority to do that. He had not overspent that budget, although he's tracking it really carefully. And from a, we have department budgets, but we also have the big overall budget. So we're within our appropriations in this big overall budget related to those. But yes, those have been costs to us and we're tracking those costs so that if there are any emergency funds, reimbursement, grants out there to help offset those costs. The other big one is also around what about lost and damaged Chromebooks? Because if you remember, we've given out about 30,000 of those, but not related to this supplemental budget. It's been with, the things we've spent have been within our appropriations.
Sean, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Kathy?
No questions.
Jesse?
Oh yeah, again, I was, wanted to ask you again, what specifically is the money being used for? I know it says the line items here, but what, what is it actually being spent on?
Sarah, do you have any more detail on that?
So are you referring to the gen fund portion or the grants portion?
Both.
Okay, so the gen fund, as you're aware, we're running daycares for first responders. So that's what the gen fund part is. And then in the grants fund, it's like a million little shuffles because we, the schools rewrite their title plans a couple of times during the year. And if we had carryover from the prior year, so it's all of our adjustments on grants funds.
So if I'm a public citizen and I'm seeing this being done, that's, I mean, I really appreciate your answers, Sarah. I really do. Is there a place where I would be able to see or know what it's getting spent on? Like is there, is there some, someplace somewhere where we have a document that shows, hey, here's what we're shuffling this around for?
All of our grants do have an original plan and then revised plans throughout the year. It's just that those are individual by school. So yes, we have all of that, but that level of detail you probably don't want delivered to your house.
Fair enough. Well, thank, so basically it's going to pick up a lot of the grants throughout all the different schools.
Right, and it's all, it's all approved in the plans and transparent through the donors. So while it might not be shown here, it's not a black hole at all. It is dotted i's and crossed t's.
Good to hear. Thank you so much.
And we have really strict reporting requirements to ODE. So for example, if major $98 or the high school success dollars, if that were part of this shuffling of appropriation, we have to almost audit that to the expenditure in our submission of accountability to ODE. So each of these things, somebody on the other end is looking at, are we spending our dollars the way we say we're spending them? And, but for this big thing, it's, it's a bunch of little things. Does that help?
Yeah, fair enough. Thank you.
Danielle, do you have any questions?
I do. I have, I have questions about the general fund expenditure. So it says it is for childcare for essential workers and increased food service for meals. So I have three questions to that. The first one is, does this cost off, or this funding offset some of the costs that we're receiving or we're having for staff who are providing those daycare services? Don't we have staff?
Yep, I'm going to let Sarah jump back in here.
Okay.
So we do have the staff, but the way budgets for school districts are built, it's a little different if you've been involved in the city. It's not by department typically, it's by the work they're performing. So they were providing pre-K and now they're providing actual daycare. And that is a 3,000 appropriation and we didn't have that in the gen fund. So it is the same people, but we have to record the costs in the type of work they're performing.
But does that cost like shore up our budget somewhere to look like it's covering staffing? Just differently, just in a different area?
Yes, because it's not actually costing us more. I just need the space to record it in the proper place. Does that make sense?
Yes, I understand that. And then, yeah, I get the counting code thing. And then for the food section of it, for food services, is this funding allowing us to provide additional access points for, for meal sites for students? And if not, is it possible to do that? So we're reaching kids more closer to home than them having to travel?
So I'll take that one and then Mike, jump in. We can continue to expand. Our issue is with capacity and number of, so kitchen capacity. How much can we make? How much food supply can we get? And I think we're at about 25,000 meals a day right now and we're struggling to get beyond that for capacity. So we're fully at capacity with employees because we also have a whole group of employees that are at risk, that can't come to work, and kitchen space and food supply chain and all of that. So SEDEXO has really pushed, I think, as far as they get, even though every week they continue to try to stretch to that next, to that next thing.
Okay, then I'll.
Not enough.
Yeah, I, I'm very concerned about it's not enough. I mean, I'm just hearing a lot that it's just not enough. So I love that you're working on it and I, it's thrilling to hear that it's 25,000 from the growth of last time. And then will this funding support the food service need through the summer? Or is it just specific to the school year?
Yeah, Mike, can you answer that one? Because there's, there's so many different federal programs that you pull from for this and we have some waivers and I'm not sure how long the waivers go and what the transition looks like into the summer food program.
Sure. So a couple of things. Our food service program is, is obviously it was never set up for the grab and go, which are the meals that we're serving now. So there are additional costs around containers and packaging. That's what part of this adjustment's for. We will continue to deliver or to distribute meals. We will continue to deliver or to distribute meals as long as all the way through the summer like we normally do. But this budget obviously ends June thirtieth. So if there's any additional costs, it would be something that we'd have to capture in the twenty twenty-one budget. But as Christie said, there are a series of waivers that allow us to distribute the food the way that we are, and we'll continue doing that as long as the waivers are in place.
Okay, thank you very much.
Paul, do you have any questions on this?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty nineteen twenty-seven supplemental budget and making appropriations for fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it's unanimous. I voted aye, you just didn't hear me. Moving on, next, approve the use of a class special procurement to purchase K five evidence-based reading interventions. Superintendent Perry?
All right, so this is a special procurement. We are asking to have approved, and it is to purchase K through five evidence-based reading interventions. We are wanting to purchase multiple choices so that student or schools have a choice in which one they get for their school. And it's been something that our elementary schools have been asking for. This is being paid for out of both Title IV and our ESA dollars, which are for purposes like this. And this is a use it or lose it before June thirtieth type of expenditure. So normally, in a situation like this, if this were gen fund, I would be asking, I would have us freeze this sort of a purchase or procurement. But because it's federal programs, we need to use it for the intended purpose before the dollars go away. And it's it's the right thing that our elementary schools have been asking for intervention material for a number of years for district adopted. A lot of them have been purchasing it with some title funds, and then were not fully aligned with strong evidence-based curriculum for interventions.
Can I have a motion for approving the procurement?
Are we gonna have discussion?
After we have our motion.
I move.
Thank you, Paul. Do you have a second?
I do. Satya.
Satya, okay, now it's time for discussion. Satya, do you have any questions?
No.
Sean?
No questions, I just I agree with this. I think it's something we've been looking at for a while now. So I appreciate the timeliness of it. Thank you.
Kathy?
I also agree a hundred percent. And we have lots of children that need help in elementary school, and this gives us tried and true methods that we can use and alternative methods as well. So I am very much in favor of it.
Jesse?
Oh, yeah, I mean, again, I think it's I think it's great. I think we need stuff like this. My one, my question to you, and you already answered one of them by saying, you know, we have to use it or lose it. But my question to you is, will this be, because, I mean, we all hoping that we come back in September. But theoretically, if we did it, is this gonna be useful to us if we didn't? Like, are we gonna gain any value from it? And then my other question is, were there any other things that this was also planning to be used for, or was this specifically our intention from the beginning?
Yeah, I'm gonna see if Linder Craig can answer a piece of that. If we're fully distance learning, I'm not a hundred percent sure which pieces of this might help us, but it still gives teachers resources for that. And I'm not enough familiar with the curriculum to know the answer to that.
And I believe this was the intended.
Sorry about that reverb back and forth. I'll wait until we can get that muted on that end. Okay. Yes, this was the intended purchase, Jesse, those are, that's a good question. But your your question about how will this work in a digital platform, I think, is a really good one as well, because these are all interventions that are designed to be given with a teacher in a small group, particularly for early learners, mainly K two kids who need extra supports in both Spanish and English. Some of them have a digital platform, but even on a digital platform, it is highly directed by a person sitting in front of a small group of kids. So there are parts in our digital learning that we are going to have to expand to be able to use these resources well. We're still hopeful to have some sort of a face-to-face hybrid model moving forward. But I think your question is a really good one about how how do these work? Most of our curriculums, unfortunately, especially at the elementary level, aren't well suited to independent learning in a digital format.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Jesse?
Yeah, well, on on that, Craig, do you think that it might?
Jesse, I can't, I can't hear you, but, oh, it's just me. Hold on, we have all of our things muted here. I'm sorry. Can you repeat? I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. That's my bad.
Okay, no worries. I mean, I could, I, again, I love it. I think it's, I think it's a great thing, and I, you know, I just want to make sure that we're taking care of kids, right? And so do you think it might be wise, like, do we know of any other options that might be a little bit more flexible? Especially because as a as a district, you know, as a whole, being progressive on our, being on the front lines of education, you know, is important as opposed to be always trying to catch up. Do you think that it might be wise for us to check out things that might be a little bit more flexible? Or do we think that there even are ones that are more flexible in the way that we use them?
Yeah, that's a good question. And I think there aren't ones that we have that we've currently been able to find that are research-based and that have research behind them on the efficacy of the model. But bringing in small groups of students for face-to-face learning is gonna be one of our first steps that I believe the state is gonna allow us to start doing and thinking about, and that will be targeted for these kids. The other piece I think that we just need to remember is, the kids that I worry about a lot are early learners in this distance learning and the gap that now they haven't been before a teacher for, you know, two and a half months. And then summer, to be able to catch them back up, we're gonna need reading intervention programs like this to be able to get them back on track.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. Danielle, do you have any questions on this?
I do. I have two questions, probably Craig's gonna need to answer these, maybe not. So for this curriculum, which I think is really great, and I know that it's been in the works for a while, so congratulations on achieving this far. The question is, was the intention of the delivery of this curriculum to be funneled through the would-be SIA one-to-one reading support teachers that we now probably won't get? And if so, how does the burden shift to a teacher that doesn't have that additional support at this point to be able to actively engage and really effectively support kids who are gonna return with trauma and already are challenged with their reading to begin with?
You guys are asking really good questions. It's making me realize that a lot of the stuff we talked about kind of stuck with people, which is great. And I and I really love that we can talk teaching and learning a little bit, because it's something that we're thinking about deeply right now. So the question about is it tied to our SIA schools? No, it's not directly tied to that model. This is designed to provide a foundation for all of our schools, not just the sixteen language and literacy schools where we were gonna flood in some extra supports and teachers. A lot of these are are designed to be delivered with a highly trained classified assistant or a classroom teacher in a small group setting. So and a lot of our classroom teachers, like Christie said, in in a lot of our buildings, people have been putting together their own set of of interventions. It's just that they haven't been consistent, and there hasn't been universal acceptance across. And so you may go to one school and get one set, and a different school and get a different set, because our classroom teachers have been doing this type of instruction for the last several years. The last little bit is, this is really, you remember how we talked about MTSS and the continuum of supports? This is a key part of that, that once we identify kids who need extra supports, we need a way to give them those extra supports, and that's what these are.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the use of the class special procurement to purchase the K five evidence-based reading intervention, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to the CTEC lease, and this is the third lease agreement. Superintendent Perry?
All right, this is the second reading of the CTEC lease amendment, and this, remember, gets us the whole property and gives us the opportunity to have our community transition program kids in that eleventh space at the Career Technical Education Center. It's fully aligned with our commitment to CTEC, and it gives us use of the whole building and the special use. So and this is the second time you've seen this.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the lease?
I make the motion.
Thank you, Danielle. Is there a second?
Second.
Aye.
Discussion? Satya, do you have any questions?
No.
Sean, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Kathy, questions?
No, I am happy with it.
Jesse, questions?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say something for the sake of the public, because we're leasing this for sixteen thousand six hundred and sixty-seven per month for sixty months. What I don't see on here is that, from my understanding, this was the reason why we're leasing it for that much, because as far as the public's concerned, we're releasing it for a dollar a year. And so the sixteen six sixty-seven a month, would I be correct in saying that's for the updates and renovations that we're wanting on that space?
Yeah, it's a tenant, Mike might have to tell me the word, but it's a lease for tenant improvements. And it's renovated in a special way for our community transition students.
Perfect. So they're so they're not just collecting profits off of our renting, it's just those funds are being used to pay for the construction that we're wanting to use for our own purposes.
Correct. Correct. That's exactly right, Jesse.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's my understanding. Instead of us doing it ourselves, we're paying them to do what we need to have done. Yeah. Danielle, do you have any questions?
No.
Paul?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. It passes unanimously. Moving on then to the Mid Wamit Valley Homeless Alliance Intergovernmental Agreement. Christie?
Right, this is second reading on this as well. Director Kylo asked if we should increase our contribution to the homeless initiative. And my answer at this point is, I don't, I think they could always actually use more money. But I also think that right now, we need to be in the position of saving every dollar for our own school-age kids. But this participation does allow us to get a vote. So at this point, I wouldn't recommend an increase, but I would be open if that was of interest to the board.
Okay, Mike, can I have a motion for approving the homeless alliance?
Still moved.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second?
I do.
Danielle, second.
Okay, I think Satya got in there first for the second. Okay, so we'll go around for questions. Satya, do you have any questions on this?
No, I completely support staying as it is without increasing until we get to.
Okay. Sean, questions?
No questions, just a quick comment to that effect, too. I think it, the way they've, the the costs of this, I think are appropriate, and, and this this is just money to offset the COGS expenses for this project.
Kathy, question or comment?
I'm very in favor of it.
Jesse, question or comment?
Yeah, just a comment. I mean, I've been attending these these meetings alongside with, you know, with Christie and Paul and everybody else that's been attending, and I think it's a, it's a great thing. I mean, I think it's it's a good move for our county, for our district, because we have a lot of homeless students and a lot of residents within Salem and Kaiser. And I think in the long run, this is gonna be a huge benefit to to our community. So I'm completely in favor of this.
Danielle, do you have any comment or question?
No, I support it.
Paul, do you have any comment or question? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Not hearing any. It passes unanimously.
Chair Hyun, before you, if I might speak just for a moment on this, you'll note that the IGA you just approved expires on August thirteen, twenty twenty. So this is a short-term IGA. It's gonna be replaced by a long-term IGA, which we're in the process of developing. And so at some point, this will, another IGA that looks an awful lot like this will come before you with some of the same terms, probably this summer sometime. And that, one of the features of that new IGA will be that a board member, an elected official of each governmental entity, will be a director of the IGA. So once this comes to you, you can take a look at that. Thank you.
All right, another opportunity for our board directors. Okay, so moving on then to approve the employment contract with the superintendent. It's a reminder that we had our first reading on April fourteenth, and now is the action. Information is in the board plate. Do I have a motion to approve our contract?
I make the motion.
Danielle, a second? Should we give that to you? Satya, the second? Okay. Discussion? Satya, do you have any comment or question?
No, I think I completely support this motion to approve the contract. And everything going on, this is perhaps the most challenging event in Christie's lifetime, I suppose, not just career. And she's doing amazing job as a legislative and policy committee member of the OSBA. I get to listen to what other school districts are doing and things like that. I am so happy to say that, you know, trying to stay calm and trying to kind of keep the flight going, because our children's trajectory cannot stop for any reason. So I am so pleased to say that you are there to help kind of light the ship flying and this flight through. So I think this is that, I'm so glad that you decided to stay and continue not to kind of decide to go play golf or whatever you're planning to do.
Golf courses are closed.
Okay.
Portland. Sharon? Sharon, do you have any comment or question?
I would just echo that. Thank you to Christie for for everything that you've been doing. I just, everywhere I go, I hear feedback about how grateful the community is for your leadership during this time. And I, I know you always give credit to your team as well, but, you know, you just really have been such a calming present, presence throughout all of this, and as always, just a very critical thinker, but with an amazing heart and doing the work for the right reasons. So thank you for sticking with 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 this throughout this this amazingly challenging time, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Kathy? Okay.
You're on mute.
All right, Jesse, do you have any comment or question?
I mean, other than that, I just want to thank Christie, you know, for all of your hard work, and other stuff's tough. And, I mean, I I'm in communication with other, you know, school boards, just, not just the country, but also like within our state a lot. And there's a lot of school districts that would love to have you. And so I appreciate you sticking with us, even though you could probably make a lot more money somewhere else. So thank you so much, and thankful that you're that you're willing to serve our community.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, yeah, you weren't allowed to leave, you know, it just wasn't gonna happen, and I just was gonna stop you somehow, one way or another. So I'm glad you're still with us. Danielle, do you have any comment or question?
Yeah, I just echoed what everybody else said, and just say that I'm thrilled that you, eight weeks ago when this came about, you didn't say, just kidding, let's just go ahead and transition to retirement, because you had the option. So thank you so much, yeah.
Boy, this would have been a bad time to that transition. Paul, do you have any comment or question? Paul, do you have any comment or question?
I do not.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving the employment contract with the superintendent, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, so one nay. Moving on to the consent calendar, is there anything that needs to be pulled?
I need to make a statement before.
Okay, go ahead.
I may have a potential conflict of interest. One of the, one of the new teacher, or one of the individuals that's being, contract is being approved tonight. I've known him since he was in first grade, and he and my nephew are the best of friends. And so I have no economic interest in it, but I do know the young man, and I don't want to appear to be giving him any sort of favor.
So he's one of a pool, right?
He is one of the pool, that's why I'm announcing the conflict in advance as our rules require.
Thank you, Paul. Is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent calendar? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. So can I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Still moved.
Thank you, Paul, a second?
Second.
Thank Jesse, a discussion. Satya, do you have any question?
No.
Sharon?
Nope.
Kathy?
None.
Jesse?
Nope.
Danielle?
None.
Paul, other than your conflict?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? It passes unanimously. There is no readings tonight. Now time for our status update on COVID-19, Superintendent Perry.
All right, I have two hours of presentation.
No, you don't. No, you don't.
Lillian is going to walk us through, her office made a kind of infographic on what we've accomplished to date. And then I would like to just take a moment to address maybe a couple of concerns that have come my direction. So the community can hear my thinking and our thinking on them as well. So, Lillian, I'll let you start.
Great. So each day, we're serving approximately twenty thousand meals per day. We are ramping up our capacity like we've talked about, and we have served more than six hundred and seven thousand meals to date through the emergency closures. We've also distributed approximately seventeen hundred boxes of food through the Marion Polk Food Share. And both of those sites will continue as, as food pantry sites throughout the summer. They will not be closing down at any time. Hopefully with the increase in production, we will be able to up the number of boxes at those locations. We also have a third site that is being supported through Catholic Community Services. And that is across the street at, at a church across the street from Auburn Elementary. So it's not technically one of our food site, food pantry sites, but it is supporting our schools and we're working with them to help make sure that they have the staffing that they need to help serve the Auburn and Holman communities. As we talked about earlier, our educators have made more than two hundred and twenty-two thousand phone calls to families and students, totaling fourteen thousand hours of, of care and connection with our, with our students. My slides are not advancing, there we go. And we've also, on the custodial auxiliary and childcare sites, we were able to clean more than forty-two thousand Chromebooks in less than a week to prep for distribution. Of course, we distributed about thirty thousand of those. Our auxiliary services has created eight million pages of material for a hundred and seventy thousand print packets for distance learning through the month of April. Salem Kaiser Schools, Public Schools was the first district daycare to provide essential care and healthy and safe environment for those who needed immediate care. And we also have sixty children enrolled in that childcare with nurses onsite daily. Of course, today is National Nurse Day, and we are grateful to them. Our educators created more than a hundred instructional videos for students. They produced them, recorded them, wrote the scripts for them, and, and so we have been placing all of those online. They created informational students for, or informational videos for parents to support transition to distance learning. More than two thousand of our seniors have qualified to graduate as of May seventh. And so we're working with five hundred and thirty-eight seniors on their credit recovery plans so that they can graduate with the class of 2020. As in addition to information about meals and services, we have been distributing information about the additional SNAP benefits available to families. And yesterday in our community newsletter, we noted that we had about a hundred and twenty people click through for more information about how to obtain those benefits. And then an additional eighty-seven people who clicked through to apply for free and reduced meals with the school district. So we'll continue to help make that connection for our community to connect them with resources available to support them.
We believe that we've reached in some sort of a personal contact between ninety-four and ninety-eight percent of our students. We're still, especially at the secondary level, we're tracking that number really closely. And we kind of update every couple of weeks on that. We'll also update where we are with seniors and on their pathway to graduation on Friday. I think Friday is another grade run for us. I know it's pass, no pass, but we're working to see if they've met the requirements. Our next big work is around what happens in the fall when we come back. We are beginning to get information from the state about what's a hybrid model of learning? Do you come back in small groups? We're waiting for guidance about summer school. Right now, we don't have any summer in-person activities planned until the end, through the end of June. But we're trying to get the regs for small group instruction, because on our minds are our students that need to do their GED testing. The only way you can do GED testing is in person. We have a space set up, we're ready to go, we think it will follow the social distancing guidelines. But until we get the guidance out about that, we can't do it. So we're paying close attention to summer, and we're having to think deeply about when we come back. And what if we have to come back in shifts? What if we have to come back partially in person and, and distance learning? So that's really where we're putting our, a lot of our focus. I know each of you have been briefed about the WorkShare, Oregon WorkShare Plan. We have submitted our application to the WorkShare Plan. We did have signatures from both presidents of our association. What that has allowed us to do is have a discussion with them around what would it look like to reduce their work time by twenty percent each week? So they could qualify for unemployment and the federal stimulus dollars and the unemployment. There is a chance that Salem Kaiser School District will implement furlough days through that plan. But it, we're working just really closely with the associations, and they're working to ensure that their members, our employees, understand the reasoning, understand what it entails, and also then they will take a vote on it. And I, what we'll also have to do is if they vote in favor of it, then we'll have to call an emergency meeting of the board in order for you to take action on those MOUs that we have gotten approved with the associations. So they're, both Rita and Mindy are being great leaders, they're asking the right questions. They're being very cautious about what this means to their members. And we're supporting that and trying to get answers to questions along the way. So stay tuned for, as we work through this week. I know that a number of the Portland Metro area districts are really close to a similar plan. Portland Public implemented their first furlough on Friday. One key provision in the plan is that the employer, that's us, submits the unemployment information on behalf of their employees. So it doesn't take the employees signing up for their own unemployment benefits. The reason for this, the most important reason for the Oregon WorkShare is to save jobs in the future. And it's been a longstanding provision in the state when businesses, including public entities, are in tough financial times in order to save jobs. So this is a saving jobs programs for kids measure. And we think that if this works out, it would be the right direction, if all of us agree it's the right direction. So that's coming up on our minds is graduation. We're getting some questions about now that the two hundred and fifty person limit on crowds. We're sticking with that August graduation timeline. Our goal is still some sort of in-person graduation. We fully recognize it won't be like we were thinking, which you can, you know, two thousand people in the pavilion. But we're committed to trying to find a way to hand kids their diploma. So class of 2020, stay tuned. We've gotten a couple of questions, I know a little chatter on Facebook about why aren't we getting stuff and things to our, the rest of our families? We have moved through the distribution of the senior stuff and things. They've gotten, they're getting their caps and gowns, they're getting anything that was in their lockers, they're turning in books. And right now, it, the stretching of our resources is trying to provide meals, seniors. We don't have a full custodial workforce right now in order to clean buildings deeply in the summertime. And then because, and this is, this is my own personal strategy in this, COVID is a hotspot in the state. And I feel like anything that we do that isn't critical puts us all, puts us at risk and puts us at risk, our businesses at risk. My belief is that if we can get businesses back up and running, that that's a higher priority than for our kids getting things from lockers. So I want to save, I want to keep the curve flat, and I don't want to do anything that we contribute to that. We have noticed that a number of parks are opening up. We still do have our facilities locked down. We will assess that based on where things are at and how the social distancing guidelines expand and allow us a little more access. But we also have to remember that we have a good share of our workforce that's at risk. And what we need them to do right now is stay home. So that's kind of our challenges in being all things that people are wanting from us right now. And we're trying to be methodical and prioritize. And like I said, our, we have to flatten the curve in Marion County, we have to get businesses back up and running. Our kids are counting on businesses getting back up and running to, to jumpstart the economy for their future. So, and again, that's getting a little bit, my own personal belief in how we turn this around. And in some ways backed by science and what our state's telling us. So with that, I'm going to open it up for questions. We still have tons of work ahead of us before we're out of this, and I know that.
Satya, do you have a question for the superintendent on this?
Yeah. Thank you Superintendent Perry. Now, you know, with this COVID, we are, how are we planning to support the emotional pandemic that we are already beginning to feel in our community, in our children, as they are in different locations?
Yeah, that's why we've stuck with our primary objective every week. The thing we care about most is care and connection. So I've said over and over again that the, our primary mission is care and connection. And also, as we're thinking about coming back, we've had some conversations and we're going to engage some work groups around this. First of all, if we could come back fully in, in person, it would be really awesome for kids to put closure on this year when they start a new year in ways that are different. Usually this time of year, we have transitioned to high school type events. We don't have any of those. So we're thinking deeply about how do we transition kids? And again, it would be awesome if we could do that in person for all of our kids. But I don't, you know, I just don't know that, that we're going to be able to bring all kids back at once. So we're thinking about those closure activities for kids and the full-on recognition that you have to, that we have to provide that emotional support in a transition. And then Lillian just pulled up on the screen, the, this is Auburn Elementary. And we have a fairly robust system for asking people if they need to speak to a counselor. So we do have a way for requesting that, and there's, she's showing you the request form now. And the, our counselors are, have been on standby to do a lot of that work. We continue to have a mental health team that meets regularly, trying to triage and improve every practice.
Sharon, do you have any question?
Yes, thank you. Kristi, my question is with regards to the furloughs, I guess. Have you, so I know that, you know, districts in ours included are looking at this for the remainder of the year because of the current budget. Have you heard of any districts, or is there a discussion about, for these potentially very large budget cuts for next year? Have you heard of any districts talking about cost savings through furloughs for next year?
I have not yet heard any of that. Most districts right now are focusing on this Oregon WorkShare for the remainder of this year. I think all those things have to be on the table as well. But no, we have not. And again, we want to really work through kind of a framework before we, and there's pieces to talk about related to employee compensation. But no, I have not heard any for next year.
Thank you.
Kathy, any comment or question on this report?
No, I'm waiting to see what comes together before I have anything else to say.
Okay, Jesse?
Yeah, I'm sorry you can't see me, my iPad was about to die, so I had to turn off video to save the life. But yeah, I mean, I did just want to comment on the, on the furlough thing. Now, from my understanding from talking to other districts, like other school boards, is I haven't heard of anything about next year. Because the reason we're able to do this furlough thing is simply because of the CARES Act. And so once the CARES Act gets, goes away, then so would the ability for us to do this. Then I did speak with, you know, Congressman Trader's office, and just asked them about the intention of the bill. And it's very clear that this was not the intention of the bill for us to be able to do this. It's kind of like a loophole that was found by Portland Public Schools. But at the same point, personally, I feel like if we didn't do this while every other district throughout the state was, does, you know, we might, I think we would be doing our, our students and our teachers a disservice by, by not assisting them through, through this way. I just, I don't like the way it's being done, but at the same time, I think it, I think it might be necessary.
Danielle?
I have a question, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, about the five hundred and thirty-eight seniors with credit recovery. So obviously we're in unprecedented times. And typically the seniors that were credit deficient up till a certain point in June would be able to, it's my understanding, continue through the end of August. Is that opportunity extended past August so they may have additional time to acquire their 2020 diploma?
I have not seen a waiver passed August first on their 2020 diploma. I think August first is still the date. We do plan to continue to get our seniors across the finish line. The one benefit this year is that usually the seniors that finish in the summer wouldn't get to walk with their class.
Right.
Seniors up until August first this year will get to participate in all the graduation ceremonies and whatever format they are. But I've not seen a state waiver around the August first. We can always continue getting them their diploma, but they go into the next cohort. So they go in to be a twenty-one grad. So we take kids all the time into the fifth year.
And I have a follow-up, Marty, if that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
What's the biggest challenge of that? What's the biggest challenge of that 538 with this distance learning concept in play right now that these seniors are facing to get complete?
The biggest challenge? Linda Myers?
I see her pop up.
Calling on you. Cold call.
So, you know, there are multiple challenges associated with this. Some of it is discrepancies in the kinds of credits that students are missing. So a student that's missing a English credit or a traditional math credit, those are pretty easy for us to catch up. Sometimes we have kids that might be missing fine arts credits or foreign language credit or health credit or things that are more one-off kinds of things. So it's a lot easier to offer a student online opportunity. Edgenuity is our online credit recovery program, but that doesn't offer every single course that a kid might need to clean up. So it also depends on whether we're dealing with credit deficiencies that are compounded by skill deficiencies. So if a student is really struggling in math and yet is still held to the standard that all of their math coursework has to be at L2 or 1 or higher. You know, there are lots of complicating issues and some kids that were on the fence but had the support of someone in a daily interaction and a daily sort of engagement with a trusted adult in the school. Now we've lost that sort of continuity and connection. So there are lots and lots of different compounding factors. But the good news is, is we know these kids by name now. We have a list. We're chipping away at that list specifically. And Kristi's right, I haven't heard of any extension for a 2020 diploma. So we need to clean up as many of those as we can throughout the summer to get them done. And any of those, any of those 538 that we can't get to before August will continue to push in into the fall.
Thank you.
Thing that we've done is our MTSS system because we know who the kids are. And those senior sweeps we've done in previous years has helped us be really set up for this moment too. So they do, they know totally who they are. They've got a group of teachers working to get them across the finish line. We're every couple of weeks pulling our numbers so that we know, because all they have to do is get a pass in order to gain the credit at this point. So there's great opportunities to, to have them finish and finish well.
Great, thank you.
Paul, any comment or question? Okay. Moving on then to
One more comment, Marty, sorry. A question came in about kind of what are we doing in addition to the Oregon work share around thinking, how do we save? So we do have a freeze on stuff and things right now, other than anything essential. We have a ton of things that people want to order for next year as we think about fall sports and some of those. We're freezing all of that until we get more information other than things like football helmet reconditioning that you, if you wait, you don't get done and then it's not safe. So we're evaluating every expenditure. Any mid-year hire, you know, try to slow it down as much as possible because every month a position is vacant is savings. So we're doing a number of those things as well. And related to the SIA, we actually rescinded several offers of employment to not be on the hook for employment when, when there wasn't the revenue. So I just wanted to highlight those things.
Okay, great. Next, we have our board and budget committee meeting schedule, which you can see on your screen. I'm pretty sure Alice has probably updated her calendars already, and if she hasn't, she will soon. Just for the record, I will not be running the June 9th meeting. Jesse will be running it. I will not be around. Then moving on to public comment of non-agenda items, the same process as we had for the public comment on agenda items, but this is for non-agenda items. Lillian, do we have any testimony? Lillian? Where'd you go, Lillian? I see you there.
I'm here, I'm here. Sorry. Switched out of my screen sharing and toggled everything. We do have one comment from, submitted by Sam Skilern, resident of Salem. He says, "Good evening. I'm a friend, ally, and partner. My name is Sam Skilern, a longtime volunteer and booster for Salem Kaiser Schools, especially in the North High feeder area. For 24 years, I have volunteered at both Highland and Grant. My sons attended Grant Parish in North. Go Vikings!" with a little smiley face. "I'm testifying to get an issue on your radar in case we need your help to reach a resolution. Since March 6th, we've been working diligently with district bond staff to reach a mutually beneficial solution regarding the relocation of the medically fragile program to Grant. The neighborhood welcomes the kiddos, but the six to eight buses required will overwhelm our parking, traffic, and safety on Cottage Street, which is already terrible. We've proposed several alternatives and are holding out hope. As co-chair of the Grant Neighborhood Association, I've helped organize the volunteer-led construction of Grant's two playgrounds worth more than $100,000 and the annual Grant beautification project during Earth Day Week. Since 2005, we've installed shrubs and pavers, vegetable gardens and beds, mulch bins. A signature piece of the project has been the strategic planting of trees along Cottage Street. Grant students and parents worked with the city arborists to select tree species, dig holes, plant, and nurture trees along Cottage. The bond plan removes these trees, but there are alternatives. Again, thanks for getting this on your radar if we need help. Thanks."
Thank you for reading that, Lillian. Could you forward that to the CBOT committee? I think they might be interested in seeing that.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, it's time for board activity report. I'm gonna go first this time. And I can't remember if I talked about the Hoover video I did for the Hoover opening last, last month. If I did, I'm sorry. I'm gonna do it again. It was kind of hard to do because, you know, you're trying to record stuff, and you don't know what your face is doing, where your eyes are looking or, or anything. But yeah, I got through it, and I'm looking forward to the final product. And I attended a virtual McKay Booster Meeting, and they did a really good job. I think that was their first one. And Linda, darn it, Linda. Love you, Linda. I hope, wish you all the best in what you're gonna do, but I'm just kind of mad at you. Nothing against you, Ethan, but I'm a little mad at you, Linda. Just for leaving. So anyway, we'll go around the room for any other comments from people. Satya?
Let's start with Linda. Thank you very much for all that you do. As I said in the last meeting, you're kind of moving from, you know, being the priestess of learning to priestess of a temple, right? So thank you for continuing to serve our community in a different but similar capacity. And in both places, you're going to do the right thing for us. Thank you. On a different note, I attended a couple of things that Legislative and Policy Committee of Oregon School Board Association. You know, in line with all that we're discussing, it was really an important meeting. The two important areas was the budget and how do we kind of prepare and what are the possible things that was one topic? The second thing that was highlighted, and we really made it into an important issue, an equity issue, was the digital divide that we are experiencing. And similarly experienced throughout the state. And so that's going to be another area that they're gonna push and see how we can really overcome the digital divide as an equity issue, because to me, it's almost like a utility. A lot of areas, people are suffering, rural versus urban. So that is another important thing. A different note, I attended the Live and Tell, the student-led nonprofit. Yesterday, we had a very good focus group on what this digital learning and this changes means to students from their perspective. And I made a summary of it. I don't mind passing it around eventually. They came up with more solutions than I've ever heard so far at the state or national level. So it's an amazing, they are already doing like Zoom groups, support groups among themselves from anywhere from 14 to 50 students supporting each other, playing games, and keeping that connectedness going. So I just wanted to share some of those ideas. And so thank you for providing them the platform that they can find a way to connect and keep their attachment. So thanks.
Thank you, Satya. Sean?
Thank you. Let's see, just real quick. Obviously, we've kicked off construction at South High School and quite a bit of deconstruction going on there right now, including taking down kind of a historical landmark in South Salem, which was Leslie, you know, the original Leslie Middle School and Howard Street Charter School. But the neighborhood has certainly been out each day wa, watching that deconstruction. And they, yesterday and today, removed what was the auditorium, the theater, and the music rooms. But I think the community is really, really excited about what's going to be going up in its place. But I know it's been a little heartbreaking for the community to see some of that come down. But very exciting for the future. And then, let's see, for the Cog. You might recall, the executive director left the Cog and went to, that's where I work at. And they have an interim director, and they were gonna do a recruitment, a national recruitment, but the Cog has decided to put that on hold right now, just given everything that's going on. And the interim director will remain in place for a while longer. And then that will be opened up for, you know, a national recruitment for the Cog. And then I want to mention SCAF just briefly because obviously, not being able to provide services right now to students and families is having a dramatic impact on income coming into SCAF. And so lots of things happening at SCAF. And more information will be coming out, I think, you know, in the relatively near future about how they'll be able to provide services or shift services. So more to come on those services that are provided. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Kathy?
Well, other than I will miss Linda very much also. She's just one of my very favorites. And people have to do what they gotta do, and she'll do a wonderful job where she lands. I have been around North Salem and other places that we've completed or not completed yet, but are deep into construction. And I just, it's amazing to me that that's going on daily, and we'll have bigger and better buildings for kids to go into when they do come back. And that's about really all I can say. I've been inside the house like everybody else.
Yep. Thank you. Jesse?
Yeah, I mean, I've been pretty busy, even though we've been kind of locked away for the most part. But I mean, I've spent a lot of my time, we went to handing out the Chromebooks and stuff out at McKay. We were passing out Food with Marion County Food Share, along with a lot of other volunteers over at Four Corners. And I think that's been really inspiring. I mean, it really shows, you know, our teachers and our community coming together to take care of people. And while I was there, you know, I saw, especially the Chromebook thing, you know, we saw a lot of district leadership, like I saw Kristi there, I saw Lillian there. And I think to our community and to our teachers, I mean, I think that made, when they see leadership serving in that way, I think it makes a huge difference, you know. And so thank you guys for doing that. And then besides that, oh, I went to the, the budget meeting for the Willamette Valley ESD. And passed their budget. They're having similar conversations as us as far as like reductions goes, and none of us have any idea what we're gonna get for funding. So that's the update on that. I was appointed by the National School Boards Association as the Pacific Regional Director for the American Indian and Alaskan Native Caucus, which covers Alaska, Hawaii, Oregon, California, Washington, Idaho, Nevada, Utah, and Arizona. It's a pretty large region. So basically, my job there, my role there is to talk with, speak for a lot of our native tribes and Alaskan, and Alaskan natives to, on the national level, and getting them involved in conversations in regards to education. As well as my personal goal with that, you know, is to increase membership, so basically to get more Native Americans and Pacific Islanders to either run for school board or get involved in education in some way. So that's exciting. And other than that, you know, same thing as you guys, making sure that we're taking care of people. And I did just want to say really quick, I'm in constant communication with people who are at Liberty House and Family Building Blocks. And the, and this is important to us because we're mandatory reporters as well as everybody else in the district. And the reports for abuse for, for kids, you know, has gone down about, I believe it was 72% in Marion County. And that's huge because, you know, we, we all know the abuse, if anything, isn't going down. It's probably going up because now these kids are locked up, all locked at home in these situations. So every kid who, where school was their safe space, which I've been in that situation, I'm sure there's a lot of, a couple of the board members may have, and I'm sure it's not sending the exact situation. So if anyone's listening, you know, just keep an eye out for your neighbors and kids who you live by, you know, and just watch out for signs.
Thank you, Jesse. That's exciting, your new role. Danielle?
Yeah, so I have a couple of, I have a question and then just a, well, neither of them are questions. So Kristi, you touched earlier on what creative ways that you were trying to save money right now. And I think Marty's in this group with me. So there's a social media group on Facebook that was created when kids kind of moved to this transition to distance learning. And it's filled with teachers and parents. And in that thread, there's a fair amount of conversations about where's all of our money going if buildings are closed? And there doesn't seem to be a really good reception of messaging that's come out telling people kind of what it looks like. I think a lot of folks know that teachers and classified staff are being paid. But are there other areas of creative measures being taken or just areas of savings in general that are gonna help us in this, such as we're not really traveling? So is there a significant savings there that we can count on? You're muted.
Unmute me. I've been muted for a while. So a couple of things, yeah, we have, you know, like the things, but the little things add up. We have put our buildings kind of in that summer schedule of not heating and cooling in the same ways. Our, we have to remember that 80% of our budget is personnel, and the governor's order said we had to pay personnel. So, but we aren't using substitutes as much. We still are in for long-term subs, so there's a little bit of savings in substitutes. There are some savings in fuel, but we still are doing transporting for childcare and using our, not our bus, our big buses as much, but our smaller vehicles for transportation of stuff for food sites and all of that. So we, we have more expenses and less expenses in some place because of this closed environment. And when you spend 80% of your budget on personnel, that becomes the issue. I'm trying to think of where else, you know, with spending freeze on stuff and things, the technology budget has increased because of the cost of hotspots, that even the setup of the Microsoft Teams cost us the phone lines. And then Mike, is there anything else you can think of right off the bat?
Just slowing down planned purchasing, like you said, procurements. And really, the, the, the reduced operational costs are going to roll into our ending fund balance, which we're going to need to cover the deficits rolling forward. So it's all for the right reasons.
Thank you. And then in addition to that, did this group, so I, I just have to say, in addition to the crazy amounts of business, small business triaging I'm doing on a feels like 20-hour day basis, parents have the opportunity to really engage through their social media and their email. And so I'm getting a lot of information pushed at me. And I, I think one of the things that I would like to ask or suggest is to possibly increase some of your communications on some of the support systems that are available for parents to access. So last week, in this particular group, I saw four teachers comment about their personal traumas as they are experiencing through the computer of their students. And students talking about how hungry they are. And teachers, I know that the teachers know how to connect, but I also know that, that they're very overwhelmed. And how can we be communicating if it's through the Remind app, which I have heard is very awesome? And how can we be communicating if it's through the Remind app, which I have heard is very awesome? People love it. They're receiving it if they have access to that technology. But I just, I'd really like to see if we can uptick some of the communication of opportunities for people to connect some of those dots for our community members, because I think they got it and then they forgot, or they missed it because they were so overwhelmed, all of those things. Just as a suggestion, and to close by saying, Linda, I've only been on this board for just shy of the year, and I'm going to miss you greatly because you've always answered my emails, and you've always been so kind to talk me off the ledge when I don't understand something and I get upset. And I hope that you stay in touch and you still respond to me. I have crazy questions. I really value you. And to Christie, I know you're getting a lot of emails from Kaiser because they're CCing me on those emails. So, thank you for responding to them as quickly as you can and really answering and listening to our community because it's important for them to feel a part of this system.
Yeah, and all the couple that I got around from you today, I'll answer those. I did in my comments around it, but I'll also answer those.
I'm sure they're watching.
Yep.
Yeah.
It was better.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Paul, anything for me tonight?
On mute.
I was told to use few words. So, Salem Kaiser Transportation Study Policy Committee did meet. They approved their project list. It's out in the public now. For any of you who go on the SCATS or the Cog website, you will see it. And it's there, and if you want to give comments, that would be great. If you want to give me comments, that would be even better. Some of them will impact traffic around some of our schools, as well as safe routes to schools, which Linda used to work with, but not anymore, which leads me now to Linda, where I was told I should not use a lot of words. So, I don't know if you can see this, Linda. But guess which one you are. Get up close to the camera and look.
I'm afraid to guess, but thank you.
Yeah, right. Nice try. I wanted to say, I didn't always agree with you, but I always appreciated the fact that you were honest about what was going on. And I don't know if you can see that one or not.
I can.
Okay, just so you know. Anyway, you will be missed. Okay.
Thanks.
I'm done.
Sure. Okay, superintendent report. Let's see, I think I tried to forget that one last month, so I got it this time.
So, yeah, Linda, you've been a fabulous assistant superintendent, and I can't talk about it because I'm going to save it for in writing because I won't be able to say all the nice things. So, let's do a big all-person applause for Linda. You will definitely be missed. On, Ethan has been on the line a couple of times, and he just wants to say hi to everyone. So, I'm going to let him jump on because, you know, he's dressed up and he's at home. And he ought to be able to at least say a few words to you. Linda's been doing a fabulous job in transition. I'm not sure I've ever seen anybody work so hard up until the last minute. Like, there's not been one moment she's like, "Oh, I'm leaving. I'm out." So, she's been great for Ethan, and Ethan, I'll let you say a few words.
Everybody, yeah, I actually put a collared shirt on. I had a T-shirt on about a half hour ago. So, I just wanted to say, express how happy I am to be here, and I'm excited to get going. I've been sitting in a lot over the last few weeks, and I've had the pleasure to work with Linda closely for the last few weeks as well. And I could tell you that there will be some pretty big shoes to fill, but I'm confident that Christie, Craig, and the crew will get me up to speed. Also, want to let you know that I'm moving up to Salem in about three weeks. We found a house near Pringle Elementary School, and I have two kids. I have a freshman in high school and a first grader. So, we're excited to be part of the Salem community. So, just thank you for making me feel welcome, and I'm excited to get going.
He's dying to be at the podium instead of in virtual. I know that.
Yeah.
Linda, did you want to make any final comments? She's like, "I'm out. I'm out."
You don't need to hear any more from me. You've got this. Ethan is ready to go. Craig, Christie, you know you have the best leadership team in the region, perhaps in the state. So, it's been an honor and a privilege, and I will be close by. And if I get too bored, you know, I can always show up and sit and maybe make public comment at a future board meeting. So, thanks, friends.
All right, I see Paul's waving his cardigan. It says, "You're beyond super."
You can harass Paul Kylo in the meetings, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, hey, Linda, we're going to speak.
He's giving you thumbs up there, Linda. I expect to see it.
I expect you to be within those three minutes every time.
Oh, yeah, I'll cut him off. Whoever's chair will cut him off. Okay, is that it? Christie, was that it for your report tonight?
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you also for your support of my contract. I love this place. I love this community, and I know I'm in the right place at the right time. So, the golf courses aren't open. I just have to be home all the time, and I get to work from home a little bit right now, but it's...
Golf courses are open.
It's open.
Nice try.
Honey County, Honey County.
They never closed.
Such a golfer. I didn't even know they were open or closed.
Come to Burns, come to Burns.
He's a bicycle rider.
That's right. I actually feel rejuvenated in my leadership, and this has really stretched me in ways I didn't expect. And I'm just super proud of our district and our educators. They are just showing up every day for kids, and so, I know this is where I need to be. So, thank you for your support of my contract.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned. Good night.